Good morning and welcome you to the Oak Island Planning Board Meeting for September. Please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have any adjustments to the agenda? If not, can I make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Approved. Minutes from the, God, June meeting. Did everyone look at the minutes? Does anyone have any adjustments to the changes? Gene? Carrie?
I did just have a clarification question. Matt, on page four, I just get for my education right, maybe I missed something, but about the middle of the top paragraph, Mr. Kirkland noted the list of exemptions did not apply to residential properties. Clarify that for the public, is that correct?
I don't have a copy of the minutes in front of me, can you tell me what that particular item was about?
Um, let's see.
Internet's down.
Yeah, Mr. Kirkland noted that the list of exemptions, the height exemptions, did not apply to residential properties. Is that correct?
For mechanical equipment, yes, there's a statement that mechanical equipment for commercial properties is exempt. But there are certain, there are certain things that are for all, but there's some that are for
That's what I thought, that's what I thought, we might clarify just to
For commercial, yes ma'am.
So Lisa, I don't know, Madam Clerk, I don't know how to, what you want to do to correct.
I'll bring them back to you next month.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, it's just, um, please note that the revised minutes are gonna go to the bottom of my pile, I'm gonna try to keep up with current minutes.
I just felt, I just felt like that that could be confusing to people, right?
Right, but I can't add something, if he didn't say that specifically, I can't necessarily add that in there, but well, I'll listen to it again.
Okay, thank you Lisa. And then also at the bottom, the last paragraph, I think, I just, I, my notes indicated that we actually stated we had a planning board of action on the height exemption regulations to come back after a proposal, legal opinion, and other examples from other towns. Just, I didn't, I didn't get from here that there was actually the planning board taking away an action from it. Did anybody else feel that we?
Well, I think what we came up with was that there could be no change to it without a public referendum.
Right, I'm just saying though, for these notes, that's what we took away from that meeting. I realize where we ended up, but just for clarification for the minutes, we did take away an action to come back with a proposal, even though in a later meeting, I guess that was August, right? We said that a referendum would be required. So just for clarification, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, do you want to make any adjustment to that?
I don't think.
Okay, fair enough. On page five, I also had a note that we discussed a clarification on how and when fill was measured. And Mr. Kirkland explained that height limit testing was done after fill was added. So somewhere in the conversation, I believe that came up as well, and I did not see that in here, although I may have missed it. So I'd like to see that added, unless, Mr. Kirkland, you disagree with that point. I believe that's what you said.
The way we measure height in the town is from the four corners of the structure. And so that would be after fill.
So that is correct, that it is after fill is added, the height limit is tested.
It's correct, yes ma'am.
Okay. So Lisa, if you could check on that as well? Again? Thank you.
No problem.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
You good? Good. I'm good.
He can't take action on that today?
We can't take action.
No, sir.
Okay. That will be postponed till October. Next time.
October.
Okay. Public comment. No public comment? We can, okay, no O business.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
One thing of O business, I guess it would be O business. Remember, we voted a few months ago to move the October meeting to October 10th.
Thank you. Thank you. New business, there is none. Board member reports. No? Nothing. Carrie?
Just a question, I had, I had asked Matt and Lisa, thank you Madam Clerk for bringing the, the final text amendment for the airport district sign, just so we all had the final text amendment on that. So thank you both for providing that as well. Matt, maybe in the staff reports, you're gonna go over where the UDO table of uses text amendments stand with respect to the town council workshops?
I can.
Can you give us an update? Okay, thank you for that. Other than that, I think I just wanted to give a moment of recognition to our town clerk, because I know I send her questions. I ask her for a lot of information. I think in most organizations, people, you know, there's, there are people in organizations that do all this work behind the scenes to make sure the machine runs, and I'd like to recognize our town clerk.
I agree.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay.
And now we got something else for you to do.
Question. Matt, are you gonna go over this? Or is this gonna be part of what you go over, the new prohibited sign, the new change?
Uh, it's not part of my report today, no sir.
Okay. For your information.
Then I think we, I think, Daryl, you wanna bring it up or you wanna?
No, I just think, check the inconsistency in the table under 10.26.6, far right, maximum number we have is one, but actually in the first, the second line of the redlined, and then it says with the maximum number of two. Didn't know.
Council approved one.
So then the bottom, so then the, with the maximum number, should it say one?
When it's reduced to writing, we can check any, when it's, before it's sent into Granite Coast Amendment into the ordinance, we can check that for you.
I think that could definitely be a, an issue.
The council approved one.
And then?
Council approved one, yep, I was
We understand that, but the text amendment should also read what was approved, is I think the point Mr. Gilbert's trying to make.
And I'm asking, shouldn't that be one versus two? In the text?
Since that's what council approved, yes sir.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you over here, you were saying something and I just couldn't hear you, so that's why I'm just trying, okay, thank you.
But then beneath that, number two says, shall have a minimum of 3,500 foot radial separation, so does that mean 3,501 feet away they can have another?
No, because they're only authorized under the table to have one sign.
So number, number two should be marked out altogether?
Because that causes confusion.
Agreed.
It wasn't part of the motion.
I mean
That's part of the motion, they
Because they've got a lot of 3,500 feet.
Yeah, that's right.
But we'll review it before sending it to Granite Coast to make sure it's consistent with what council approved.
Okay.
Sorry to
No, that's a good point, thank you, Mr. Gilbert, Mr. Pershaw, those are good. Clarifications.
I just, I just I just have one other question.
Go right ahead.
So it says that they're allowed a maximum number of two LED digital changeable signs. So what if they put up two signs and only put one digital billboard on each one 3,500 feet apart?
Sir, they're only authorized for one sign with two faces as a part of this, so they wouldn't be able to put two of these signs up, just because they're, well, one, what we've discussed here today is that, that note that says two should say one, because council only approved one sign. So the point you're trying to make is not even something that we should worry about, because that should say one.
Okay.
Yep.
So at the end of the day, these revisions will be made to the, to the, to the text, right?
We'll make sure that it's consistent with what council approved, yes ma'am.
Okay.
I'm confused too. Because it says two.
Well, I mean, I'm
Saying that's supposed to be one pole.
The change that I made in this text reflects the motion that was made at the council meeting.
Yeah.
So there was not any discussion about the linear feet. So, um, in my mind, I'm gonna have to ask them to revise that again, because I can't go in behind them and change
Right.
if it's not part of the motion, so that's something we'll have to address with council.
Thank you.
If there's only one sign that's authorized, the radial separation is moot, because you're only authorized for one sign. It, it doesn't matter what the radial separation is. So that, even if that language stays in there, under number two, that says the radial separation is 3,500 feet, it doesn't matter, because you're only authorized one sign, it doesn't matter what their separation is, you get one sign and that's it.
So, so let me just make sure for clarification, so Madam Clerk, you'll revise to go back to council?
If, if necessary, I'll, I'll consult with these
Okay. Thank you.
Before anything gets sent in, we will hash it out.
Thank you.
With that, I am good. Matt, legislative updates, please.
Yeah, absolutely. You have to bear with me since the internet's up. Luckily, we've got a PowerPoint that I can go through for you guys. Just a second while Mike gets that pulled up. Okay, well, hang on just a minute while Mike gets that pulled up.
Yeah, I can't even access the server in here.
Uh. Well, that would be a problem.
We don't have a flip chart somewhere you can write on?
Nope.
Sometimes old school.
That's it, let's go old school.
Looking on a record timeframe today.
I know, y'all slowing us down.
I know.
We did have a blackboard in here last time, where you wrote pros and cons.
Yeah, but I, there's enough slides in here that I won't be able to remember all this off of my head.
Oh, yeah, I bet it is.
Okay. Okay. We all wanna take a brief recess. Does that, I don't know.
Five seconds, we're gonna have to move this to the next meeting.
Well, Matt
Can, it's not going anywhere, I'll put it that way. The legislature's in recess for, till November, so unless they come back unexpectedly, none of this will change in the next month or so.
So Matt, maybe while we're waiting, maybe you wanna do an update on the table of uses workshops?
Yeah, absolutely.
That might be a feel for us.
It's really quick, because it's pretty brief. We worked with council to get all the information that they want in, in a packet for their review. And at this point, the council's working to schedule dates for that workshop. As you know, we have had several special meetings and with the comp plan kicking off, I think people's schedules are tight, but as soon as we get one, a workshop session scheduled to review those changes with council and try to field any questions they might have, I don't have an anticipated date at this time, but council's working together to, to figure out their schedules and make sure that we have adequate time to, to do that review. But as far as I know, we've gotten their packet ready, it's good to go, so as soon as we set a date, we should be able to move forward with that, absolutely. And then, the intent with the workshop is to, since it's so, since it's not necessarily, in most instances, large policy changes, but it's a lot of information to review. So we can hold that review, and then hopefully when we get to a public hearing to actually make those amendments there. They, they've had enough time to review, you know, answer any questions they might have, and make that public hearing a little, little bit more smoother, where I'm not reading through 80 pages of text amendment for them, because they've already had a chance to look at it.
So what, what's the, how, how are you planning to present it, Matt? I know you and Mr. Bailey and I had talked about, you know, kind of some overview as opposed to your point of a lot of red lines, I think the council did not want to see a whole packet of red lines, so what, what is the format that you plan to present?
So council's receiving an executive summary, four pages of the proposed changes, which gives them a high level overview. I then broke it out into a spreadsheet that categorized the changes, related it back to our comprehensive land use plan and the, the UDO audit that was performed by the COG. And then just because they have to see it eventually, the red line is in there, but it's at the end. So you could read the executive summary and the, the and the spreadsheet and understand the changes that are, that are being made there, and that, that's all compiled and put together for them. At this point, it's, it's just dates. So in the actual update, basically I'll, my plan is to give them that high level overview and let them have time to digest. If there's any questions at that first workshop, you know, we can answer them then, but they may need time to come back at a, at a second workshop to field any additional questions, because we wanna have all that answered to the best of our ability before the public hearing for them.
And if there are questions or suggested revisions from council through those workshops, will then that come back through you, back to us for any revision before the final consideration?
It wouldn't necessarily have to, council can amend proposed text amendment on the fly. So they could, when they get to the public hearing, they could amend it at that time, should they want to. I mean, they, it's at council's discretion whether they wanna kick something back to the planning board at that point or not.
Understood, but they also have the discretion to ask for our advice and counsel on those changes as well, so it could come back, things could come back to us again.
Yep.
Okay.
So, you know, it's exciting, we got a lot going on right now, I can say that much, just as far as the planning department goes, so.
Yeah, I just, for me on the planning board, there's so much work that went into that, and, and there's such critical changes about it that I, I just would encourage, I know our staff is working hard on this, but I would encourage our council member to, members to get it on their agenda and make it a priority as well, I think they do, but we, I think we need to move this forward as fast as possible.
Yes ma'am, absolutely. All right, it looks like we're good to go on presentation, unless there's any other questions or anything we need to cover. All right, legislative update. So, as you all know, we work under the watchful eye of the General Assembly of North Carolina. We are only authorized to do what the General Assembly authorizes us to do, so anytime they have a long legislative session, it's a good, good idea to catch up on any planning related bills that got passed, and there, there's quite a few this time around. Some more impactful than others, but we'll, we'll review that with you. Several topics that got covered, zoning and land development, subdivisions, infrastructure, coastal areas, renewable energy, building code changes, agriculture, we don't have agricultural, it's like, you know, part of town here, but there were some changes to agricultural bills. Three main bills that were passed that we'll cover here today, Senate Bill 607, Senate Bill 355. As a note to that last one, Senate Bill 6, 166 was vetoed. At the time of this PowerPoint presentation was put together, that veto's been overridden, so anything about Senate Bill 166 is now effective. But for some reason, there was a, most of the time when there's gonna be a veto override, it usually happens pretty quickly. For whatever reason, the General Assembly waited a month or two to do the veto override on that, that particular bill.
Do you have a summary of what the, that bill is in the presentation, or can you give a quick?
I'm gonna cover it.
Okay.
This is, this is what I'm gonna be covering.
Okay.
Absolutely. Okay. In Senate Bill 607, this doesn't really relate to the planning board a whole lot, but now state and local governments must mail, or if the permittee consents, email permits, instead of requiring people to come pick them up in person, a lot of jurisdictions are saying, hey, you gotta, you gotta come into the office to get your permit. That's no longer allowed, you have to give them the option to receive it via mail or email. We already do this, luckily, that's not a huge change for us, but it's something to remind you guys of. This one's kind of interesting, battery charged security fences. There was a law previously that limited local governments' ability to regulate these via zoning. The new provision that got passed this year is that if you have any, if, for folks that had prior existing ordinances, you can't enforce them anyway. So it seemed like there was some jurisdictions that had existing regulations that were still enforcing them out there, so the General Assembly came through and said, not only can there be no new ordinances, you can't enforce the ones that you might already have on the books. There was definitely some, you know, safety related concerns in local jurisdictions for some of these security fences. Some of them are, from what I understand, pretty painful to run into, so I can understand the concern around that. Airports in the flood plain, certainly relevant to us, since we have a bunch of flood hazard area and we have an airport. There's a new statute, 14321557A, to allow airport projects, I checked the list, it's, it's pretty much anything you'd see in an airport. Has to be allowed in a flood hazard area, subject to what's called a no rise certificate. That's a higher level of engineering standard than an elevation certificate that you might get for your house. Engineer has to go in and do a hydraulic, hydraulic study of the land and certify that the new development will not impact the flood, the base flood elevation in the immediate area, so you can't put something in that would then create an increase. Having worked in a few jurisdictions where there were instances where people needed no rise certificates, it's a pretty high standard to meet. You know, you're, you're basically certifying that what you're putting on the ground is not gonna have any impact on the flood hazard area, which is, you know, as you can imagine, difficult to do in some instances.
What was that, what was the certification that's required?
A no rise certificate is what it's called. It's a, it's an engineered hydra, hydraulic study, so they look at the, the new development and the, the flood hazard area and the flow of the water, and basically make sure that, just like it says, there's no increase. So, you know, if you have a, if your base flood elevation is 13, right? If you put a solid structure in there, or if you elevate the dirt or anything like that, that, that's gonna raise your flood hazard area. So a no rise is an engineered study that says that this new development will not affect that. It's a, definitely a much higher standard than a typical elevation certificate that you get to just say that you're, you're not just out of the special flood hazard area, you're not impacting the, the level of that flood hazard at all. So. Uh, this is a big one. This one has a little bit of an interesting history. This section, new section of 160D was added to the Regulatory Reform Act, passed and concurred within about a couple of days. So there wasn't much discussion or input for this one from local jurisdictions. But what it does is for on premise signage, it allows a sign owner to relocate or lawfully erect, re-erect any, or relocate or reconstruct any lawfully erected on premise sign on the same parcel, as long as sign complies with the rules that was applied when it was originally constructed, and the total advertising surface area does not increase. Basically, all on premise signage is now treated as a legal nonconformity that can not only be replaced to 100% of the value, it can be moved within the same parcel. There's a two-year clock on that, so basically, if your sign is legal nonconforming and it gets knocked down, you can come back 18 months later and build that same sign, as long as you comply with the rules when it was originally permitted and you're not increasing the size of the sign, and not only can you replace it, you could move it to the other side of the piece of property if you want to. This is all now a requirement placed on us by the state. Another flip of this is not only is it treated this way, the burden of proof is on the local government to prove that it was not lawfully erected. Usually when you come in with illegal nonconformity, the property owner has the burden of proof to show that it was legally done. Now, the, this statute change has flipped that for this instance, and put it back on the local government to prove that it was not lawfully erected at the time it was established.
Does this, does this allow for local municipalities to put incentives or anything like that in place
to get them to do, to conform with more town friendly or, or, you know, more current ordinances? Or does this then allow somebody to always go back to the original?
It, it doesn't rule out incentives, but you'd have to have a pretty high incentive, you know, if you're trying to get somebody to change their sign when they can just legally replace it back like it was, you know?
Well, okay, so
The answer is yes, but that'd be a, an interesting, you know, setup to have, where you have the option of, hey, I can just put back what I had, and there's no, you know, no local government can say otherwise, but
Well, no, for an example, we, we may not want electronic signs or something like that in a certain area, I'm just making this up. But somebody can now go back and put a big tall pole sign or something like that, that's gonna be, you know, obstructive or, or not the way we might have it under our current ordinance today. If, if we put incentives in place to not go back to what they are legally able to do from when it was originally permitted, to putting something more appropriate under our current ordinance, or I don't even know if this just completely wipes out our current ordinance or what, but to put something different, and let's say we gave tax, you know, relief for property taxes, or something like that as an added incentive for them to build something different that's more in line with the community standard. Is that something that we can do? And if we did that, and they then put up the new sign, do they still always have the ability to go back and put up a pole sign? Because that was what was originally permitted, or now the new sign, wherever they put it, sort of makes the old location now moot?
Yeah, so it doesn't rule out incentives to come into compliance with the ordinance, you couldn't, I'd have to look at the legality of, you know, the structure you're talking about with property tax bills, I'm pretty sure that's not something that local governments are authorized to do.
It was an example, it wasn't.
But it, it's clear that it's, it can be replaced within two years. So if, if you said, hey, we're gonna give you an incentive to put a sign, you know, a new sign up that complies with our ordinance, let's say they do that, that's still, that two-year clock is still good.
Is it two years or 18 months?
It's two years.
He was using 18 months, that's when they made the decision, they still have six months.
So let's say you came in and said, I'm gonna use that new incentive to put in a new sign that complies with the ordinance, and you do that two months after your sign blows down, right?
And a town can't give them at that point, and, and by the way, I know this is a presentation, we can always take this side. It sounds like this one, given that there's conversations we've had about signage and, and the issue that that is for residents, I feel like this might be one we wanna unpack and, and maybe brainstorm as to are there things that we can do that? And I don't even know, going all the way back, you know, where signs were in the island, how we would ever prove that there wasn't a sign there if they come back and say, hey, in 1953, we had a sign here, so now it's just sort of, everyone can put a sign wherever and however they want to.
Yeah, I mean, if the sign was there in 1853 and it hadn't been there in 20 years, well, they're past their two-year
Oh, so, oh, that's the two, okay, good, so we don't have, thank you, I appreciate you listening better than I did.
All new signs have to abide to our local ordinance.
Okay, got it.
New signs still have to comply, it's, if you take it down, if you take down a nonconforming sign, you have two years to replace it as it was or relocate it on that property.
Yeah, so this might be a good one for us to take up as a singular, and, and actually think about, you know, are there things that we wanna do as a town to maybe? You know, if there are those that we don't wanna see replaced?
Sure. Absolutely, good points. Some local governments do require removals of nonconforming signs. If we require removal of a nonconforming sign, we have to pay the cost of the old sign and the new sign. So that's, yeah, it's pretty punitive in that instance. It applies to on premise advertising signs removed on or after October 1st, 2021. And then for signs removed between 2021 and 2024, construction has to begin by July 9, 2026. So a couple of caveats in there on some of the dates that you have to work under. Another one, this is in Senate Bill 166, so as I mentioned, this, this is now law. 160D 111 has been added to specify that when I, when my, my staff or building permit staff reviews plans required by 160D, I can't make an administrative decision on the scope of work covered by architect or engineer that has sealed that, so I, I can't say, no, you're not supposed to look at this, you're supposed to look at that. If, if they seal it, I cannot challenge the scope of work that's been covered under that. If they seal it, I cannot challenge the scope of work that's been covered under that. Performance guarantees, for those who don't know, performance guarantees are, if a new development is approved, local governments can allow the developer to submit a bond or a letter of credit or a cash bond for the improvements within that development. So let's say I'm going to build a road, right, as part of my development. I can bond the cost of that road and then record that plat. And then, once that road is installed, I can get my, get my bond funds back. A few changes to how that works. Local governments have to inspect the improvements within 30 days when it's requested. If there's a dispute about meeting the standards, the developer can get a certification from a licensed professional engineer, so from an outside agency, to submit to the town as to whether it complies with the standards. Then, once it's inspected or approved, we have to release the performance guarantee within 30 days and acknowledge the completion or the receipt of an engineer certificate certifying the completion. And that, this has always been the case, but it's been added to this as well. We can't require a performance guarantee for the maintenance of an improvement. So I can't say, you gotta submit a bond for the maintenance of your street that's going to cover, you know, even 10 days, let alone the lifetime of a street. That's always not been authorized, but this also reinforces that, that requirement that you can't bond the maintenance of something after it's been installed. Curb and gutter standards, basically giving developers the ability to use any NC DOT curb and gutter design. So a lot of towns have curb and gutter designs that are the, what most people think of as a curb and gutter, you know, essentially a high curb, six inches high, vertical usually. DOT authorizes valley curbs on a lot of their street, which is more of a angled curb. So local governments don't have a choice over that anymore. If it's in the NC DOT curb and gutter design standards and somebody's building a street, we have to take it, it's being good. Sidewalks and ETJs, subdivisions of 20 lots or less that are approved in an ETJ can't be authorized unless the town is going to accept a long-term maintenance responsibility via written agreement with NC DOT. That law is retroactive. Several stormwater changes. If there's maintenance funds that are, local government collects for private stormwater, those have to be returned at the request of the owner of the stormwater control project. Many jurisdictions were requiring that the operation and maintenance agreement be included on a plat. Now it can be referenced on any instrument of title recorded at the Register of Deeds, so it doesn't necessarily have to be just on the final plat. Couple of changes that might impact what you guys look at. The state statute clarified several things that are considered impervious or not built upon area. These have been the case mostly, but it was clarified in the ordinance that this is not considered built upon area. So slatted decks, swimming pools, number 57 stone, which is a type of gravel, trails, landscaping materials, and they added artificial turf to that. So those are not impervious, or those are impervious.
Wait, those are, they're pervious.
Those are not pervious.
They're pervious.
They're pervious, yes, thank you, thank you, Carrie.
Not impervious.
Yes. And we can't enact, implement, or enforce local government ordinances to the contrary. Any definition of built upon area has to comply with the exemptions that are found in the state statutes.
Is there a definition, I'm sure there is, for landscaping materials? That seems pretty broad.
I can double-check the ordinances, but a lot of these are, you're right, pretty broad. You're absolutely right. And what is a trail? Could be a lot of different things. This is an interesting one. It doesn't necessarily affect what the planning board does, but I did want to bring it to your attention because it calls into some of the things that we've talked about in the past. There's some new rules for water and sewer conditions for allocations. The state statute now prohibits some conditions for allocation. A couple that are relevant to the planning board are specifically two and three. So if a lot of jurisdictions were basically getting around some of the things that you can't relate, regulate via zoning by regulating them via water and sewer allocation. So you might say, well, we can't regulate building design elements on single-family homes in our zoning ordinances, so we're going to relate it to how we allocate water and sewer as a creative workaround, essentially. That is no longer an option. The General Assembly said, no, our intention is to not have local governments regulating these building design elements. So we're going to make sure that you're not also doing it via your public utilities.
One quick question. We have a minimum parking spaces based on?
So that's the size, that's the size of the parking space, not the number of parking spaces. That's, that's a good question. So basically, if it's, you know, you can't say, oh, your parking space size instead of nine by 20 has to be, you know, 10 by 21 or something like that. And there's some clarification in there that it is set at that nine by 20 standard, so. But you can't tie any of that to water and sewer allocation in the end. And then, fun wrinkle is there was some jurisdictions that were using a scoring system for allocation. So they take the new developments and look at the elements of the new development and score them. And basically, the better scorer you got, the further in line you were for that water and sewer allocation. Said the same thing. So you can't base your scoring system for allocation on those criteria. Parking space size, building design elements, minimum square footage, fire apparatus access roads in excess of what the fire code calls for. So there was, and this is all stuff that you can't do via zoning already. And basically, like I said, jurisdictions were using water and sewer allocations to do it instead. General Assembly said, no, you guys aren't authorized to do that anymore. Just a reminder on a couple of legislation efforts from the past session. These didn't make it through committee in their sessions, but just some things that are still floating around out there. In the 2023 session, House Bill 409 and Senate Bill 374 contemplated preempting local government regulation of accessory dwelling units in residential zoning districts. So basically saying that if it's residential zoning, you shall allow accessory dwelling units subject to the criteria in the general statute, not your local ordinance. Like I said, that hasn't been enacted, but it was looked at at the last session. And then workforce housing development type was also looked at in Senate Bill 317. And the, they were looking to preempt local zoning controls for use dimension requirements, utility connections, and review time for that new use type that was established. You know, while housing is something that's on the General Assembly's mind, you know, these are topics that could certainly come up again in the future. So just wanted to remind you of those previous efforts. And these are both bills that I believe the town passed a resolution in opposition of. But always good to keep a mindful eye on what's happened in the past and just died in committee, but, you know, still could be floating around out there somewhere, so. I did want to cover a little bit of case law that happened in the last year, as well as one that we haven't really talked about in the past, but is important when we think about ordinance amendments. It was an interesting case at the Court of Appeals, which was an entity versus the city of Asheville. The city of Asheville had an ordinance that prohibits signs on vehicles parked to display the sign. So, you know, you might see a box truck and it's always parked in front of a business that has a sign on the side of it, essentially. They specifically prohibited that on, in their signing ordinance. The town sent them, sent this entity a notice of violation. The town received an email back from the property owner that they had removed the sign, that it's no longer on the property anymore, so that it was resolved. The town did not re-inspect it. There was no appeal at that time. Two years went by, two years after this initial notice of violation. A code enforcement official saw the truck driving around town and sent, the town sent a notice of violation and a letter from the town attorney claiming that the violation had been continuing for those two years, just based on seeing it out in town, not specifically on this property that had the violation. So the property owner appealed and won their appeal. The court found that it was not a continuing violation. And there's two big takeaways from this. One, the precision of your ordinance matters because ordinance is about vehicles parked on a piece of property, not driving down the road. So when he saw that driving down the road, that's, that's not an ordinance violation based on what they had passed. It had to be parked on that property that it was advertising for. Number two, the value of reinspection, because the court found that, after they got the notice of violation, the town was notified that it was resolved, that it was cured. If there's no follow-up, you can't claim that that violation continued the whole time because the town was notified that it was cured. And without any evidence that it had continued, you had to take it on its face that it had been cured. Another note about that is, once a violation is cured, it's gone. You know, if it comes back, it's a whole new violation. It's not a continuance of that previous violation. So definitely something to think about when we're writing ordinances. I know you guys are all good at this, but what we put in there matters because they tried to cite them for a violation that, you know, wasn't specifically prohibited in the ordinance. Just driving the truck around was not a violation. Nor could it be really. You can't write an ordinance that says you can't drive a legal, road legal vehicle down the road anyway, regardless of whether it has a sign on it or not. And then one, one thing I wanted to make sure we covered as we talk about any ordinance amendments going forward. Nolan and Dolan are two Supreme Court cases, United States Supreme Court, that establish when the town or when any government can exact something from a development. So if you've got a new development going in and the town says, okay, we want you to dedicate roads or dedicate, you know, park space or make a payment in lieu or do anything like that. If it gets challenged in court, it looks at two standards. Nolan established the essential nexus between the condition that you're looking to impose and the government's land use interest. So it has to have some type of nexus between your legitimate government land use interest and the condition that you're trying to impose. It can't be arbitrary, basically. And then it's got to be in rough proportionality between the condition and the impact of the development. This comes into play a lot in traffic studies. So you might have a road that's very congested already and you go in and require them to do a study. That study's going to look at the impact of that development and mitigating the impact of that development. They can't require them to fix the existing traffic problem out there. It's just, has to deal with the development of that piece of property and the impact of it. These are, these sound kind of general, but they're, they're pretty strict standards as far as court review goes. You know, if you really, if you can't make that nexus connection and show proportionality, you're probably not going to make it through that court challenge. Coontz came in later, also at the United States Supreme Court, that extended that to cash exactions. So let's say, okay, I'm not going to ask you to put in this road improvement, but you're going to give the town some money and we're going to use that to improve the road out there. Still got to meet these standards. You can't just have some, some number that the town has come up with. You got to make it through these tests in order to do that. And then in the state of North Carolina, a case named Anderson Creek applied that to, applied to our constitutional protections in North Carolina to those same standards and extended it to impact fees. A lot of jurisdictions had impact fees for, you know, traffic, schools, et cetera. Anderson Creek said, no, you're not authorized to do that. You can't show that it meets the essential nexus and rough proportionality case. Throw them out. And that's why a lot of local governments had to go back and revise their ordinances for impact fees. Essentially, if you don't have a local act authorizing, at this point, if you don't have a local act authorizing you to establish these impact fees, you can't do it in the state of North Carolina.
Are those things, things that you can put back on the table if there was a zoning, a request for a zoning change, for example?
For what things that you could put back on the table, like impact fees?
Like, let's say, you know, that you did want to require extra lanes or like an ingress and egress lane, for example, on a development that was going to happen that, that would, that they're asking for under a zoning change?
It, it would depend. It's usually based on the actual development of the property, not the zoning change. Because the zoning, when you look at traffic, just using your example, if you're asking for a zoning change, there might be 40 uses that are permitted in that zoning district and they all might have varying traffic impacts. You know, if you allow a fast food restaurant versus a retail establishment versus an office, those all have very different traffic impacts when you study them. So it's really difficult to do, to do it based just on the zoning change unless it's a very narrow zoning district. If you're coming in for like a conditional zoning and you're only asking for one use, then potentially, yes. But if it's a, if you were saying, I want to go to CLD, you know, in the town of Oak Island, well, there's so many different uses in there, you, you could never figure out the actual proportionality at that point because you don't know what the impact is of the development. So usually tie that to the actual site development approval instead of the zoning district, so.
So then in that case, let's just take CLD, and I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, but could you then have, in our ordinance, could we have several different designations for CLDs so we begin to limit certain uses under CLD-A, CLD-B, or something like that that could then allow a, a town? I mean, I, and again, we don't have to go down too, but I mean, are there ways that you can still? Because you sit here and think residential in the future, if you were to allow a commercial or a big multifamily that isn't currently allowed, and now you have a lot of track. Our roads are so strained already, so that's where I'm sort of thinking, does this?
Yeah, so, you know, I, I think I understand what you're saying. You know, it would certainly be an interesting ordinance construction to do something like that. But, yeah, it's usually until you have a site plan and know how many units are going on the ground or how many square foot of your commercial development is going on the ground, you can't really establish the impact of that development, so. I'm not saying it couldn't be done, but it'd be, that'd be something unusual, in my opinion. But it's always something good to think about if we're, you know, increasing open space requirements or, you know, thinking of looking at some of these exactions. You got to be able to establish those things and it's got to be in proportion to the impact of the development. That's all I had for you today, which is good because I need to get out of here in about four minutes. But I did want to give you guys a couple of other updates. We've filled out our staff in the planning department. So we're fully staffed up on zoning technicians, they're all getting onboarded, everything's going really well. We've also hired our GIS administrator, who's been working with fire on a few things, as well as economic development. So she's really hitting the ground running. The town wrapped up damage assessment after the storm yesterday as well. So we're putting together all the, the information for that as well, just for anybody who's interested. And finally, I have to plug it because I'd be sad if I didn't, but the Comprehensive Land Use Plan Community Kickoff Event starts today. That's where I'm heading in just a few minutes. The big community piece is starting tonight at 6:00. There'll be a presentation from the consultant to town council. And then afterwards, we'll have an open house here. So it's going to run from 6:00 to 8:00. If you can't make the council presentation, still come on by for the open house if you have time while we're here. And we'll, we'll have plenty of people and plenty of exhibits for you to look at and give us feedback and information on. So if anybody's watching at home, please spread the word and come on by. That's all I had for everybody today.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Adjourn. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.